I call our city council workshop to order. First item on the agenda is Streets Waste Convention Center Annual Update.
It's a lot.
Convenience.
It's a lot.
Convenience Center, I'm sorry. I said convention center.
No, it's not the convention.
It's not a convention.
But that's okay. We can have a convention over here. Hi, everyone. It's my time to do our annual update on our streets and the departments that fall under streets. We have solid waste management and the convenience center that fall under Tenny's jurisdiction. He kind of looks after that. The street department has seven employees. Tennymaker is the superintendent and he has six others that work under them that he and all of his men have CDL license, which is a good thing. I'll start out with our street department budget. This is the maintenance and operation budget and the crew that totals seven, the personal services, which includes salaries and benefits, comes to $293,538. The materials and supplies part of the budget includes the maintenance of the streets and sidewalks and the bridges and that totals $244,800. Services and charges, which then kind of includes your vehicle maintenance and equipment maintenance and other incidentals like that, that's $67,850. So the total operation budget of the street department is $606,188. The maintenance and operations of the street department takes care of 144 miles of streets and roads. We have a 1987 pothole truck for patching streets.
Nice.
Nice. It still works.
It looks like it's 1987?
We have a lease with, it's for Caterpillar, motor grater, loader and backhoe. And this is a county piggyback agreement with Warren Power and Machinery Incorporated, who provides a governmental lease program through the Oklahoma State contract. And for these pieces of equipment, we pay $32,254 annually.
So does the county match that?
No, this is just through the county.
Oh, okay.
The county, that's the way we were able to get this lease and piggyback on the county. The county doesn't pay anything. It was just a vehicle to get us the equipment we needed. At the time, our motor grater was gone and the loader was not operational and we needed another backhoe. So that's what we did. It's very expensive. In fact, we had the opportunity this year to buy it out, but it was not economically feasible for our budget this time. The payments would have run, for a five-year payment, it would have run $54,134 and for 84 months, it would have run $39,000, whereas we're only paying the 32 now for that.
All that stuff.
Yes.
And these are renewed, right?
These are renewed.
I mean, so the vehicle itself and the Caterpillar are all?
We can renew them. The price will go up. Right now, they're working beautifully for us. We've not had any problems with them. We have a maintenance agreement we have to do for Warren Cat and they check us and so those pieces of equipment are always maintained to the fullest. We also purchased a crack sealing machine and a seal coat machine and that was recommended by the street committee last year and we now have them in use and they're putting it to good uses as they have time and, yes, it's beginning to.
Is that the backhoe that's out at the convenience center that you're talking about?
No.
No, it's the crack seal.
This is a crack seal.
No, I'm jumping back to that.
Oh, you're going back?
Yeah.
No, that's the backhoe out there, that's not a backhoe. Well, they may use some of the backhoe out there, but I'm not sure if that's the one. They've got an old one.
Big one. Maybe it's an old one.
They have a loader out there too, a big Caterpillar loader. But that's ours. That's ours.
Well, I know I pushed for the crack sealer when I walked around Highland Park and actually my brother does stuff at Fairview. Anyway, so we were talking about it. So are we gonna do, because I walk Highland Park and we talked about, that's me and the reason, are we gonna do Highland Park?
We will do that as we have time.
Okay.
We've got seven people and it's pretty hard to spread them out and right now we're in the holiday season and...
But it's on the list.
Yes. It's on the list. So those are some things. We also take care of the bridges. We check the bridges. The street department checks the structure visually and then the city has 13 bridges in its jurisdiction and every two years, ODOT provides a list of engineers from which we choose three to interview and we just went through this process. And from that, those three interviews, we pick one that we want to do our bridge inspections and they're all very qualified. We, you know, they all rate pretty closely. So we have done that process. We have, in fact, the resolution for the bridge inspections for the next two years is on the council agenda tonight. We have 10 bridges that are rated at 33 tons, two bridges rated at 16 to 20 tons and one is that wooden structure out on Davis Road, I believe it is, and it's rated at four to 15 tons.
And that's amazing.
Isn't it? It is.
You ever been over that bridge?
It's been a while, but I have.
Well, and the range is four to 15 tons. That's quite the range.
That's the range, yes.
Yeah.
But that's the way they rated it.
Okay.
In 2015, we had two bridges, the Harrison Street Bridge and the College Street Bridge that had critical fracture. The Harrison Street Bridge needs some attention, but the repairs have to be scheduled after the football season because we get into that in the north of the stadium, yes. And there's a couple of braces that are resting and so they're going to install a solar tube casing around it and fill it with concrete and that will take care of that problem. The College Street Bridge was found to be a critical fracture because of its design and there's nothing we can do about that.
So there's no fix.
Those are no fix.
No fix. So what do you do?
I tear it down and do a new one.
Nothing, that's what they said.
Gotta tear it down and do a new one?
It seems to be in pretty good shape to me, but...
See, it used to have a wooden floor and plank so they came in.
Right.
Probably 25, 30 years ago.
Yes.
What's our current lifetime amount, do you think?
Are we gonna close it down soon or are we gonna have to?
Well, we can probably find that out when they do bridge inspections this year. They'll give us another report on it.
Something like that could be a big deal.
It could be, but I can ask them to find out and we'll keep that one on our radar so we can, yeah. The street crews also maintain the guardrails. They check for loose hardware and they do installation. They do weed management for visibility and appearance. And you know, when ODOT finishes a road, we get to have all the uppertances that go with it, like the lights out there. It becomes ours. The street capital improvements, the funding for the street capital improvements and repaving streets is provided by the $4.25 user fee that's on the utility bill. This provides approximately $235,000 annually and the cost of paving about one mile of street is $130,000, so we don't get too much out of it. That depends on the condition. The street department coordinates with the street committee annually, or this is the way it's been done in the past. I had this year given Mr. Johnson the list that we have come up with. He will go over it and decide if he wants to make any changes before we go to the street committee and that's his call. And then the street committee makes the recommendation to the city council. We also do street sweeping. We have a 2006 Timco regenerative air street sweeper that sweeps five days a week on a regular schedule and touches all areas of the city. In addition to that, we look after traffic signals, overhead street lights, street signs, posts, painting crosswalks, school zones, painting center lines. We look after drains. We have to make sure that the leaves and the debris is out of those drains when we have heavy rains because it can cause flooding. They do a lot of jetting and they also do a lot of repairing to the grates and installing new grates. We take care of street lights, the decorative street lights. There are 138 in the downtown area and out on Semeron Boulevard that we are responsible for. 71 of them downtown area and 35 of those have banner brackets. The street lights between, these lights are between the railroad in Wentz, Harrison and Honor Park and on Semeron Boulevard. OGNB maintains the decorative lights that run east of Wentz to and around the temple. They also take care of the banners and the hanging and the removal of the Christmas tree wreaths and you might note that the Christmas tree wreaths are up thanks to my great street department. They're good. They also look after curbs and sidewalks, concrete sidewalks and brick sidewalks. However, ordinance number 3208 makes it the property or the business owner's responsibility for the maintenance in front of their property. This includes sidewalk curbing, guttering, drainage, et cetera, and it covers grass clippings and other debris that gets in the street. A lot of people don't realize that they're responsible for that. We also maintain the rights of way throughout the city. We trim the trees to make sure that the visibility and traffic flow is good. Here again, ordinance number 2881 states that the owner and occupant of any building or property will keep branches trimmed to 10 feet in residential areas and 12 feet in other areas, including the alleyway. Very often that doesn't happen, so we go take care of it. But it's really difficult sometime because some property owner may have a really pretty ornamental tree and we don't want to go damage that tree. So we would prefer that the homeowner take care of those trees and cut them the way they need to be cut.
And they're given notice of that?
We can, we don't usually, but...
So when you cut them, you just cut them?
No, we let them know. We let them know before we cut them. If it's an ornamental metal tree. There's two or three over here on the east side that we had just ignored because they're really nice trees and we don't want to just hack them up. So we usually try to contact them and see if they can do it. Otherwise, we have to because of the safety involved.
So on the alleys, let's talk about that a minute. That is the homeowner or business's responsibility?
Yes. It goes from center of alley to center of street, the way I have always understood.
Really?
Am I right? I hope so. Our street department also responds to events such as floods, snow removal, car wrecks, ice and wind storms. We provide barricades for parades, festivals. 89er Parade, Christmas Parade, the International Brewfast, Territorial Christmas Arts and Wine Festival and any other thing that might be scheduled. Do we have any other questions? They're a busy bunch. The City of Guthrie and Guthrie Public Works Authority has been under contract with Waste Connections of Oklahoma Incorporated since May of 2004. The contract is for five years and it has been renewed twice. We do have a good relationship with Waste Connections and they provide a well-rounded service for our citizens. In addition to the regular trash pickup, they provide a monthly pickup of bulky waste. Their service, this service falls on the Wednesday scheduled with your regular trash pickup day. If it's on Monday, your pickup is the first Wednesday. If it's on Tuesday, it'd be the second Wednesday and kind of so on. Additionally, ordinance number 2999 requires that all businesses and family dwellings in the city limits of Guthrie accepting use of services provided by the cities of Guthrie and its private contractor, in this case Waste Connections of Oklahoma Incorporated. The convenience center also falls under streets, even though it is a Guthrie Public Works Authority department. We have one employee, Joe Mackey, that manages the convenience center and he does it in accordance to the ODOEQ regulations. He coordinates disposal, the disposal of accepted solid waste as specified in the Waste Connection contract. He manages the recycling bin and also is provided contract. The convenience center hours and rates, Tuesdays through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They're closed Sunday and Monday and holidays. If the holiday falls on a Monday, the convenience center will be closed on the Saturday before the holiday. City residents with a current water bill, and they must show that bill, $10 a cubic yard. If it's roofing materials like shingles, it's $15 a cubic yard. Non-residents, they're gonna have to pay $12.50 a cubic yard. And if anybody would like the phone number of the convenience center, we can get that out too because very often people don't know who to call and that's 405-282-2978.
How do we, talking of that, I've been out there quite a bit in the past and here recently. I know that when it rains and we have a lot of water, it's a nightmare out in front of those bins. How do we, isn't there any road we could asphalt that or put some, whether it be just a regrind or something?
I...
I mean, it gets this deep.
Yeah, they've talked about getting some of the asphalt that's crushed up and used, but I don't know where they can get it. They've talked about a number of things, but anyway, you go about it, you're gonna have that. But my boss might have some ideas. He always has some good ideas.
My boss might have some good ideas.
They have your calls up on Highway 32 and I'm sure they're gonna have big calls up and once we get to here.
Oh, we've already asked for all that.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, we've already asked for that, so...
Any thought of getting into the composting business?
Yes, there has been talk about that.
Yeah, that's a, it's not gonna be in the street department, they'll be out at the Waste Treatment Plant.
Yes, yes.
So that's one thing that we'll be looking at. Improvements coming up at that facility is to take our sludge and turn that into compost, but as of right now, we don't have the proper equipment to do that, so it'll be some capital costs that goes along with that, along with getting permission from DEQ.
Good, good. Do they else have any other questions? Thank you very much for that presentation. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the sales tax. You wanna start that off?
Yeah, I'll give you guys some information. A couple of weeks ago regarding proposed sales tax, what I've gone through, past committee meetings, I've gone and requested staff give me their master list of what they're needing to operate each one of their departments. Then I kind of sprinkled in a little bit of my own thoughts and theories and past experiences and kind of given you guys a single spreadsheet right here and based upon your guys' previous sales tax proposals, what we have put before you guys here today to have a conversation about is a capital improvement sales tax for 15 years at three quarters of a cent. Think of our last couple workshops, a few months ago actually, I kind of gave you guys information regarding different sales tax rates, what they would bring in. Then based upon regional averages of sales taxes and statewide average of sales tax, that would still keep us underneath both of those averages. So with all that being said, I'd be more than happy to entertain any information you guys may have or any thoughts you guys have concerning the type of sales tax, the rate of the sales tax or the term of the sales tax.
Well, I think most of our discussion in the past has been that the sales tax, we felt should be focused on quality of life type things, not exclusive of anything else, but that would be the main, seem to be the main focus, the main interest. And as I kind of break down quality of life projects for the community, I was thinking in terms of, really of age groupings kind of. And to start out with youth, I think we need to do something better with some kind of a sports complex or certainly enhancing the sports fields that we've got. One constant concern that I hear on football and soccer primarily is that there's no, they're playing on dirt. The grass is a challenge to keep up and I don't think it's sprinkled. I don't know that they are not, but I don't think that they are. But clearly, I think we could do better in providing an environment for our youth in all of the athletic arenas, whether that be football, soccer or baseball. So that's one thing that I would, that has always kind of been a focus on my plate, as well as some kind of a, either enhancing our pool or making a splash pad, something along that lines for that, again, for that grouping. For our, for the adults, somebody mentioned the paths at Highland Park, I guess John, you did, but I'd like to see us do a better job of maintaining the paths that we have and adding walking, possibly bike paths around the community. And I think that's, I think that's, in my mind, anyway, that's an element that we should be working with. And I think we've got another opportunity coming up with the mineral wells thing with the APB and working with the county and the group there in possibly creating additional paths, walking paths. I, you know, I think in the senior area is where I kind of put, where the trolley, we talked a little bit in initial presentations about supporting the trolley system, that they're having some challenges, but I think the trolley, the transportation system for seniors and disabled is all in the hands of the trolley and I think we need to do everything that we can to try to support that. And some kind of activity area for senior adult activities, the Highland Park Hall, I think is a good start, but I think could be enhanced with a project. And I think those are all on one of the three or four lists that are circulating around, but in my mind are kind of the priorities. And then something to enhance the downtown area, I think we need to do, I think we can do a better job with our signage, entry signage as well as directional signage once we get here. And I don't know what we can do with the streets, but I think we need to look at something to create a safer environment, both for pedestrians as well as for drivers in our downtown areas. Those are just some of my thoughts.
And just kind of go over the, I think, pass you guys out, an actual proposed budget and you guys have listed on there, improvements at a Waste Treatment Plant, which would actually be a new plant altogether. Right behind that, we have a ladder truck to what the mayor was saying, sports complex, pool splash pad facility. And on the bottom rows, we have cemetery improvements, including probably a fence and improvements with the infrastructure internal when it comes to the streets. Then of course, across the board in all our departments, we need to have fleet improvements, just purchasing and getting our rotation in of new vehicles and equipment. Then finally, you guys, well, not finally, but the second to last, you guys see fire in EMS station. I know at some point in time, after probably conducting a study and have some conversations with the county, Crescent and everything that's kind of going along, it might be more of a countywide issue that we may have to look at later on down the road addressing. And finally, if you guys will notice, the way that I set this up is that we have the project with the payment for the project and we have the remainder of the money left over from the three quarters that's being proposed. And at the end of the day, we still have probably a million dollars in the first two years and about a million and a half in the last three years that we can do some additional projects that you guys may have now or come up with in the future or maybe just that we place back for emergency situations that as we see a need arise, that we will go out there and address that need, that capital need in the future. So that's kind of the game plan that, you know, as staff, we're proposing and we welcome any input that you guys may have. If that's something that looks good to you, you guys also acknowledge that too and we'll put together the resolution, the ordinance and get you guys some dates if that's the way you want to proceed.
So to clarify, you're saying that we could do all seven of these project areas?
Yes.
With this over 15 years?
Yes.
How much is the revenue?
A little over a million, about a million, $150,000 a year. Then I escalated that based upon, I think, a half a percent.
And this is just on the 70, or .75%?
Correct.
On top of what we already have?
Yes.
On top of the three, that's where we're coming up with the?
Yes.
I guess the estimated four and a half million dollar a year tax revenue, gross revenue, is where I'm coming up.
Yeah, total, yes.
Yeah.
So you're asking what other projects that we would be interested in putting on this list so that it can be staffed out? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, it's actually two items. One is that if that's the list that you guys are okay with for us promoting, what we'll be utilizing the sales tax for, that's what we'll be using as promotional items. But also, just to let you know, that's kind of, at the end of the day, what we want, what a proposed plan would be. So if you guys want to move up a fire station instead of a sports complex or move the pool around in front of the fleet, then you know, those are all conversations we can have. So, but they don't necessarily have to be set today. Those are conversations we're gonna be having in the future regarding the timeframe and scope of the projects.
I do know that one item, public restrooms downtown are important. I've heard several businesses talk about they need one on the other side for customers because a lot of their bathrooms are not industrial grade and as did people want to come in.
Yeah, there's gonna be quite a few of those things. I know that we had several items that had come up and as you kind of noticed, I've kind of kept anything that's essentially under, you know, a million dollars out of this, out of it, but that doesn't mean that we don't have money left over in reserve at the end of each one of those years and you kind of see that on the last remaining column that I have on the second row. So items such as that, I know that we've had discussions concerning a disc golf course, which we're currently in discussions with, some individuals coming up. I know there's gonna be some stuff about dog parks that will be discussed in the future. Those are all things that can happen based upon, you know, our current capital that we have and that we can budget over each and every year, but you know, any of those items that are probably gonna be underneath the six-figure mark, I kind of kept off at this point in time because we should be able to take care of that internally, something like that.
But what do those kinds of things do in terms of advocating the sales tax?
Oh, that's by all means, if that's, if we want to commit to doing those projects, we don't have any issues with committing to do those projects and we just take that... if we don't have any issues, we'd commit to do those projects, and we just take that million dollars that we have in the first two years and put it towards those projects or on the back end, either way.
I just think from a strategic point of view, it's better to say to the voters, if you vote this sales tax, here are the things that are gonna happen, and try to make that as inclusive as you can instead of to be determined.
Sure, I agree.
And, and I think that that, I think that really helps in letting the public know, if, if you vote this, here are the things you're gonna get, not just the big things, but... I would think that, yeah, some of the small things we get initially just to have showcase, like, see, these are things we're giving to...
Thank you, this is things that are out there and Ron can actually see, touch and feel.
You can see and use right now.
And that's why I left so much money on the front end and the back end available for both of those things, so we can come up with a list of things that we're gonna do the first couple of years that, you know, total about a million dollars. It could be restrooms, it could be accessory library, it could be dog parks, it could be, I think we have a whole list of an email of all those things too, that were, that were listed and discussed prior to this workshop tonight, too, tornado sirens, you know...
Where'd these come from?
Just everywhere.
Okay.
Just kind of the comprehensive list. It's not totally comprehensive, but it's all the things that I could find that had ever been put ink on paper, so, and I wanted to bring it for you, so...
Were we gonna do, even if it's an in-house survey or something like that, so we kind of have a sense of, maybe even especially on some of these smaller projects, we have a sense of the things that people most want? I mean, we could do stuff like if you see these, and you could have something that ranks all these, so people have a sense of the ones they most want and, or make sure given people...
Some of them don't belong on the list. No, there are several things.
Right, as you said, that HVAC for the Scottish Rite Temple, it's privately owned.
Correct.
It shouldn't even be on there.
No, that's, I think it's, some of those things are just like public-private partnerships that may help to do, you know, additional development of the downtown, so. I mean, what, people come in from all over the country in order to go there, but if we limit ourselves to the number of months that people could go in there, that might be something that's just at least to be discussed, so...
I, personally, I think that that might have some potential for bringing some conference convention type activity in here, because once you get over about 50 or 60 people, there's no place to go in this town. What's an HVAC?
Heating and air conditioning.
But obviously, the Scottish Rite would have to be willing to pay the freight in terms of the, the, the cost of running air conditioning?
Sure.
And heating, which isn't small in a facility that big. But it's an, I think it's an interesting potential, and, and...
I happen to know they spend a whole lot of money already.
They do.
And if you put air conditioning in there, they're...
Yeah, that bill could be $100,000 a month easily, I bet.
But have we had any discussion with them about that possibility? I don't know. I think it's still important to at least have a, and I've always been pushing this, have a sense of what the community wants, make sure that we have a little bit, make sure that we have some, citizens want this, this, and this, and make sure that... Well, Mercy Hospital just went, went out on monkey something, what is it? Survey Monkey. When they're doing their community needs assessment.
Yeah.
And I would submit, we could do that same thing at a very minimal cost, if, if not almost free. And, and, you know, the community's kind of, I don't know what the response has been, but if the response is...
Do we have emails?
Pardon?
I don't know if we have emails, comprehensive...
Well, could I suggest also putting something in the monthly water bill that somebody can turn back in with their payment, and that way it's basically a very minimal, if any cost at all, other than just what we have to pay?
You know, and we can do it multiple ways, but I think as long as we get some input from the community, I think that's...
I think you're still overlooking the input that you've had, and you wasted another six months just to get to this discussion again tonight. We started this discussion long ago, and here we are again, we're going right back to...
Yeah, we got a lot more, we got a lot more things on this, on this list than what the...
This is pretty radically different than what we're giving them.
I don't remember a sports complex on the other one.
It wasn't?
It was, wasn't it? I thought it was.
Two and a half million?
We've been talking about sports complex for years. I don't remember it being on the one that the committee...
It wasn't for...
Anyway, this is, the list is a lot more comprehensive than it was a few months ago. Any question about that? And I'm not against the list, I'm just saying that like...
How do we, where, where is our infrastructure being handled in all of this? It's not, is it?
What, what part of the infrastructure?
Any, whether it's replacing water lines, increasing water line replacement, all of that.
You guys have, from, I think that first conversation we had, you guys probably have enough money to go and continue to do your sewer line replacements. Your water replace, water line replacements will have to be addressed, and that could be addressed either which way, through fees or through sales tax. Then streets are the same way, I mean, they just have to, I mean, those are all things that can be discussed and put on here, so...
But isn't, that, that would be a, a pretty, a pretty big part of quality of life, I would think?
Well, it depends.
On some of these water lines.
People are much more, in my experiences, people are much more likely to vote on things they can see than things they can't, so, that's just my experience.
I think that's the reality of what we're dealing with.
And I think that that's, that the only way that this is gonna come through is something that where the citizens can see what's going on, such as a sidewalk to Walmart, or something for public safety or public convenience, as opposed to, yes, water to your house is definitely a convenience, but it's, again, like you say, it's not something you see, it's out of sight, out of mind.
There should be a mix of sexy and non-sexy things as well.
Well, I got the, I got the biggest non-sexy thing on.
There's some things that we...
It comes with wastewater, there's none of your sexy.
Stinky mess.
And that's gonna come down to where they say we have to have one before two.
Correct, and that's what, that's what I'm trying to get ahead of, is that, you know, Maxine and myself and Bill have already had that conversation, is that we believe if we're proactively pursuing, you know, monies in order to get that replaced, that they'll extend timeframes and permits and help us out with any notice violations or any consent orders that may be coming down the pipe for us. If we're not actively pursuing that, then they become a little bit more stern about the processes and procedures we currently have in place.
So what's the next step? You wanna see something at the next, on the next city council agenda with, with specifically specific projects, with the identification of, of community input?
Wait, can I, can I request that we do it in tandem? I mean, is, if you guys are prepared to go forward with the CIP, three quarters of a cent for 15 years, if you guys are prepared to do that, I'll see what we can't do between here and the date of the election for us to do a, a survey, so we can get that out and back fairly quickly, so we can rearrange these things if need be.
Well, I think that's very important, so we have the public on board, because no matter what happens, without the public being on board, this is all...
I agree.
Well, there had been some discussion at some point in time in hiring somebody that was going to help us with the community's attitude on this. Are we gonna pursue that or drop it?
It just depends on what you guys want to do when pursuing that. I know that, you know, that's, that's a great thing. I think me and Steve were out at the, where were we sitting at the table the other day? For the health thing. And it's, I, I know that Steve and I hear the same thing over and over. I mean, a lot of these things on the list, I don't think the bottom things are ever on that list, but I guarantee the top three or the fourth top thing in the top row are stuff we're hit up about every time we go out. The Waste Treatment Plant in and of itself, as I explained to Steve, is that we can either have it supplemented by sales tax, or we're gonna look at some significant rate increases in order to help improve that. So it's kind of one of those sexy, unsexy items. But all the other ones down at the bottom, you know, are things that can be discussed, and I don't think those things are the things that we can necessarily take a survey on and get some feedback on, is that, you know, as we go forward, you know, what, what would you guys like to see this funding for, because, you know, half of us essentially are taken based upon just the top items that we know are a need and have been communicated to council at this point in time. But I've, I've done exactly what you've done, what you've said at this survey and gotten it back within the next month on what community assessment is, and I think we can get one of those things developed pretty quickly, and I can, I've done those several different times. As a matter of fact, I can probably go back in my old files and grab one out and do that.
As long as we can make some small adjustments based on feedback.
Sure.
So I think that's really important.
And then, and the language, and the language won't be, and the language for the, the resolution ordinance will not be placing specific projects in there, it'll actually be based upon capital improvements and the term and the length. But after that, for how we're going to promote it, then how we're going to get feedback on how to utilize it, I think we can get that done in the same timeframe.
So, so when are you feeling like we should?
I gotta, I gotta get the list of the dates for next year and see what's...
Fourth, sixth, the March.
There you go. Well, we may stay away from that one, but see what other dates are available to us, and we'll kind of come back with a game plan. But if you guys don't have any issues with the type of tax, the rate, or the term, then we'll come back with a resolution ordinance for you guys to pass, and then we'll, I'll have a, a plan for the rest of it concerning the actual projects and promotions and feedback.
Explain to me why we would want to stay away from the primaries, because it'd be maybe a pretty good voter turnout.
You guys tell me, I've always tried to, tried to stay away from them, because they do have a large voter turnout, but I also know that people, when they go and they're in the primaries in a conservative state, in a red state, is that they often go to the polls angry, they're looking for change. And we live right in the middle of, let's dismiss everybody and get everybody all new. I mean, that's just the way our state is and has been since I was a kid.
And gets politicized, and it could be thrown out there as, as something that people don't want specifically, so that's one of the problems. A lot of, a lot of cities try to avoid a primary or a general election, so. I, I kind of think we should do it right after that or sometime after that, just so we're not, the air is a little clear, we're not thinking about, you're gonna be thinking of primaries for about three months, you know, very intensely, so... Okay, so what I'm hearing is that we will be looking at a proposed ordinance at the next city council, continuing to develop a mature plan for community input through various mechanisms, as well as identification and fleshing out these projects so that we also know, have a better handle on what the costs are.
I'm comfortable with the cost, we'll just figure out exactly what we need.
All right, any other discussion? So you're saying it's gonna be on the next agenda?
Yes, first one December.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Anything else?